Call the meeting to order, our park regular meeting on Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand nineteen, at five thirty. Roke call start, Miss Ryder.
Here.
Trustee White, Vice Chairman Ballhorn.
Yep.
Trustee Cronster, Chairman Robinson.
Yes. We're gonna skip by nominations appointment at this time, we'll come back to that. We'll go on to consent agenda. Followed items are considered to be routine by the Everino Airport Authority and will be enacted with one motion should the discussion be desired of any item. That item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of amendments of October eighth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting, Everino Airport Authority. Number two is approval of the minutes of October twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting of the Everino Airport Authority. Number three is approval of the minutes of the November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the Everino Airport Authority, due to lack of quorum, no minutes exist. And number four is approval of the minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting of the Everino Airport Authority. Five is approval of resolutions, number twenty dash zero zero seven, a resolution of the Everino Airport Authority establishing meeting dates, times, and places for regular public meetings of the Everino Airport Authority for the calendar year two thousand twenty. And six is approval of the claims requiring trustee or authorization for the period beginning November first, two thousand, or November first, two thousand nineteen, and then November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. I want to pull one, two, three, and four, and vote on five and six. Have a motion on five or six?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion second. Now the roll call, or start with Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee White, Vice Chairman Ballhorn.
Yep.
Trustee Cronster, Chairman Robinson.
Yes. Make a motion on one, two, three, four.
Make a motion that we approve, in one, two, three, and four?
Second.
Start with Ballhorn.
Yep.
Trustee White, Trustee Cronster, Trustee Ryder, Chairman Robinson.
Stand. I guess we're gonna adjourn, and we can delay for that, is that right? Or we have to adjourn?
I mean, you have, it's the same body, you can definitely control.
You could always bring it back in January.
The general meeting.
Okay. So, we're just gonna table that and bring that back to nominations and appointments?
Yeah, it's not an agenda.
Okay. Okay, so, we're gonna go ahead and motion to adjourn. Motion?
Make a motion, yeah.
Second.
A motion second, in all favor.
Aye.
For turn.
I now call the Everino Recreational Regular Meeting Authority, regular meeting, Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand nineteen. Roll call will start with Miss Ryder.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee White, Trustee Cronster, Chairman Ballhorn.
Yep. Nominations, I'll table that also. Does anybody got any problem for that?
Well, you can't tape, we're just gonna.
Oh, okay, we'll just.
Skip over that.
Skip over. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the Everino Recreational Authority and will be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of the October eighth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the Everino Recreational Authority. Approval of minutes of November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the Everino Recreational Authority, due to lack of quorum, no minutes exist. Number three is approval of minutes of November nineteenth, special meeting of the Everino Recreational Authority. And number four is approval of resolution number twenty dash zero zero eight, a resolution of the Everino Recreational Authority establishing meeting dates, times, place, and regular public meetings of the Everino Recreational Authority for calendar of two thousand one.
I can pull one, two, and three, make a motion to approve four.
Make a motion.
Second.
And a second? Roll call will start with Miss Ryder?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee White, Trustee Cronster, Chairman Ballhorn.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve one, two, and three?
Do I have a second?
You'll have a second.
I'll have a second, yeah, 'cause you weren't here, that's right. Second, roll call will start with Miss Ryder?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Stand.
Trustee White, Trustee Cronster, Chairman Ballhorn.
Yes. Discussion items, number five, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the amendment to existing restaurant and bar lease agreement. Matt, do you wanna?
Sure.
Or whoever's been working on it?
That would be Matt.
Matt.
So, we have our existing tenant, which is Epi Heath LLC, that is operating a restaurant. They have not been making money, they, and they have also not been paying the lease. So, they came to us wanting, basically, an opportunity to assign the lease to another operator. We didn't want the lease assigned to the other operator just yet. There's another group that is interested in running the restaurant, but they wanted, they have to get their liquor license and their alcohol license, get their beer situated, so that they can run the bar as well. That's a key component of returning profit at the restaurant and bar. So, they needed about three months. In the meantime, we didn't want the bar and restaurant to close down in between now and then. So, the proposal you have in front of you is an amendment to the Epi Heath LLC lease that would reduce the rents down from seven fifty a month to zero a month until they establish a lease of their own, the new group that's gonna be operating. So, until they get their liquor license, they have asked for, to get established, a reduced rent rate. Also, in the lease amendment, there is a section in there that's dedicated to establishing a payment plan for Epi Heath, to get them paid up over the next year.
Now, what was the part paying seventy-five percent of the utilities, if that, that was for the new lease?
Yes, the new lease, he would still be responsible for seventy-five percent of the gas and electric, I guess.
There really is no new lease, I mean, no.
Right.
No, there's no new, there's no new, you're just redoing the current lease you had, because they still, they're working, they're working under an agreement with, 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 what do you call it?
Epi Heath.
Epi Heath.
Yeah, I missed one.
Heath, Clayborne, Clayborne and, yeah, they're probably, yeah.
The only thing it's doing is reducing the rent from this point forward, they're still responsible for everything else in the lease, which would include utilities.
And I think they'll probably, they'll probably address that again when this leases up, whatever else, with repairs are done, what they had in inventory, everything else, if we have everybody else. Not right, Matt, I mean.
That's correct.
So, German.
So, why are we pushing out what they already owe for twelve more months?
Well, I mean, I think the bottom line is, you know, we're in a, we're in a deal, anybody's been through it, had a tough time, you know? We don't wanna get in the business of running a restaurant.
Right.
Some people tried that, I didn't like it, and I wasn't for it, I voted against it, and it didn't work, it wasn't a good deal. It just, we shouldn't be, the city shouldn't be in that business. If you remember correctly, I also, I also got upset of the deal, you know, I had a problem with us doing the same thing at the swimming pool. You know, we used to run the concessions there, we're trying to, you know, trying to get away from that because of the labor and the costs, and it just, all the rules change now, you know, as far as offering health insurance, it's a whole different deal. Can't do it like we did before. So, I think, you know, they're just having a tough time, and the bottom line is, you know, they're in the winter months right now, there's no golfers out there, there's no traffic out there, I think just, you know, they're having a tough time. I think they're, they, I know that they, you know, they could pull that now, pay the lease, you know, be responsible, held to the contract, but that would leave us without an operator there, and the problem is, I think if we don't have an operator out there, then we're gonna lose, you know, what we can do, you know, and I think that's the whole point, the whole thing. If we, we have to keep someone out there, we have to provide services, you know, I said we have to, that's what it was designed for.
Right.
I mean, I, you know, I said, we don't have to do that at all, you know, but, I mean, that's what it was designed for. And, and my point is, is that whatever we pay, it's a lot cheaper that we're subcontracting this out than it would be for us paying the money, the salaries, and the liability insurance, and everything else. In my opinion, the reason why we structured that way over the years, I kinda the architect of it, is 'cause we don't, we, we don't have any liability for it, you know, we don't have anything out, we don't have any skin to gain on it, but yet we provide the services for the golfers, we provide the services for the tournaments, because that's where they make their money at.
Make a motion to amend the existing lease.
I second.
Have a motion on the second. Roll call will start with Miss Ryder?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Cronster, Chairman Ballhorn.
Yes. Motion for a German?
Someone.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. It's now five thirty-one, I call the Everino Hospital Authority, regular meeting of Tuesday, December the tenth, two thousand nineteen, to order. We'll start off with roll call vote. Roll call vote with Vice Trustee Cronster, is that the name?
Trustee Ballhorn.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder, and Chairman White.
Yes. We'll move on to the consent agenda, the following items be considered routine by the Everino City, or Everino City of, or Everino Hospital Authority, being acted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on that item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes, October eighth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting, City of, City of Everino Hospital Authority. Number two, approval of minutes, November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the City of Everino Hospital Authority, due to lack of quorum, no minutes exist. Number three, approval of minutes, of the November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting of the Everino Hospital Authority. And then number four, approval of resolution, number twenty zero zero nine, a resolution of City of Everino Hospital Authority establishing meeting dates, times, and places for regular public meetings for the City of Everino Hospital Authority for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty.
Pull one, two, and three, and approve four.
I pull one, two, and three, a motion to approve four, I got a second for approval of four by Trustee Ballhorn. Roll call start with Ryder, on approval of four.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ballhorn.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Cronster, Chairman White.
Yes. All right, I got a motion for one, two, and three.
Motion.
I got a motion by. Hang on now. I got a motion by Ryder, and a second by Ballhorn, and now we're gonna start with Ballhorn.
Yep.
They're trying to get ahead of the car right there.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes, stand.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cronster, Chairman White.
Yes, motion carries. Motion for a German?
Someone.
All right, before we do that, we, the, the, the times for the bid documents for the hospital, just information wise, Jeremy, were put off, I think the architect had some things, because the holidays falling, is that right, is that the way, I bet you understood it, and they put it back, so it just was put back a couple of weeks, is that right?
We pushed it to January the twenty-third.
I couldn't remember what they said, yeah.
January the twenty-third, because we believe that, given the hot, given the holiday season, we'll get more bidders to bid on the project. So, it'll be a better deal, and it'll increase our likelihood of getting a lower cost.
Motion for a German?
Someone.
So, all say aye.
Aye.
We're a German. It's now five forty-four, and I call the Everino Municipal Authority, regular meeting of Tuesday, December the tenth, two thousand nineteen, to order. Roll call start with Trustee Ryder.
Here. Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Ballhorn.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Cronster, Chairman White.
Yes, new business, deletions, contentious to the agenda time, are there any? If not, we will consider you, the following items be considered routine by the Everino Municipal Authority, being acted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on that item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of the October eighth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the Everino Municipal Authority. Number two, approval of minutes, October twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, special meetings of the Everino Municipal Authority. Number three, approval of minutes of the November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, regular minutes of the Everino Municipal Authority, due to lack of quorum, no minutes exist. And number four, approval, approval of minutes for November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting of the Everino Municipal Authority. Number five, approval of resolution, twenty ten, a resolution of the Everino Municipal Authority establishing meeting dates, times, and place for regular public meetings for the Everino Municipal Authority for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty. Number six, approval of budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and twenty, ending June two thousand, oh, no, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Number seven, approval of claims requiring trustee authorization for the period beginning November first, two thousand nineteen, and ending November thirty, that's two thousand nineteen.
Pull one, two, three, and four, and approve five, six, and seven.
Pull one, two, three, four, and approve five, six, and seven. Are you pulling these because you weren't here?
Yeah.
Well, how, and I've been looking, I mean, I don't have nothing to prove if we don't.
Stand by it.
No, you don't.
One.
Okay. I got a motion to approve one, two, three, and four?
No.
I got a motion.
Second.
Roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Trustee Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cronster, Chairman White.
Yes. All right, I make a motion to approve five, six, and seven.
It's a move.
Second.
I got a motion in second. Start with Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cronster, Chairman White.
Stand. We'll move on to E, discussion items. Discussion consideration possible action, approved claims for sports payment company amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion approved.
Yeah, motion.
Second.
Got a second. Roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cronster, Chairman White.
Stand. Move on to nine, discussion consideration possible action to award project number K eleven, Refuge Water Storage Lagoon Pump Station, Forest Main, on Jones Road, and allow Chairman and Mayor to sign off, I'm associated there too. This is a, a deal that I'd like to put off, if we don't mind table this, maybe my, especially before Christmas. We wanna do that, just to kinda clean some of this stuff up before the end of the year. But, I think we need to get, Jeff, we need to get some more information, before we do this, it's four hundred something thousand dollars. We wanna kinda look at our budget, because of some of the things we got going, and we wanna confirm some things for you all, Jeremy, is that correct, before we, before we ask you all to approve this? So, we set the bids, and we have a low bid, but let's, if you don't mind, let's just table this till the next meeting we can meet. Just do that, I make that motion.
Just the other side.
This is the, the side of the lagoon that we closed, and we're putting, we're putting the water from the wastewater treatment in there, and basically what we did, we went out to bid to put a system in there that's going to basically chlorinate that water. Now, we can, at that point in time, sell that water to the oilfield companies, and/or we can, at some point in time, reuse that water if we wanna introduce that water back in. Think about that, and whatever, but we really wanted to mainly sell the water, but we wanna make sure that we're, on timeframe wise, we're selling that. Jeremy and I have discussed it, and our, and our position is, if we don't have the contracts in place to sell the water, then let's just shelf that deal, and save that for a hundred thousand dollars. We have some drainage projects that we just built today, that we, you know, we're tied on money, and we're gonna still get tighter, so we'll talk about that financially, though. So, I think it's just one of those things, it'd be better, Jeremy and I discussed, basically be better if we just hold off this till we get those contracts, Jeff, Jeff's working on his end, to get all that stuff sewed up, and then we'll have that information to you, and then that way we can make a decision as a body, to decide, do we wanna do this, roll the dice and do it, sell the water, or do we wanna hold off at that point in time, and not award the project at this point in time? Does that make sense?
Yep.
I think it's, I think it's real, you know, I, you know how concerned we are, but I think it's paid off for us, so. All right, I make a motion, we table, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, let's, Ballhorn.
Yep.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cronster, Chairman White.
Yes. Motion for a German?
Someone.
We got a motion? Second. We got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're a German. It's now five fifty, I now call the Everino City Council, regular meeting of Tuesday, December the tenth, two thousand nineteen, to order. We'll, roll call, start with Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder, here. Vice Mayor Cronster, Mayor White.
Here. All right, we're going to the swearing in ceremony, administration of office to Tracy Ryder, council member elect, award four, and Mayor Matt White, elect, by Roger Ryder. He's gonna do it right here, Roger.
We can?
Yeah.
Okay. Spot Tracy.
Okay. Please raise your right hands, okay? I state your name.
I, Matthew White.
I, Tracy Ryder.
Do solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support.
Support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And discharge the, helps my duties.
With fidelity.
Yeah. That I have not paid or contributed either directly or indirectly.
I have not paid.
Directly or indirectly. Or contributed.
Or contributed.
Either directly or indirectly.
Directly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
To procure my election.
To procure my election.
Put your hand there. Except for the necessary and proper expenses.
Except for the necessary and proper expenses.
Expressly authorized by law.
Expressly authorized by law.
That I have not knowingly violated any election law of the state.
I have not knowingly violated any election law of the state.
Or procured it to be done by others on my behalf.
Or procured it to be done by others on my behalf.
That I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly.
That no one will receive directly or indirectly.
No one will receive indirectly or directly. Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or nonperformance.
For the performance or nonperformance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
For any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Congratulations, Mayor, congratulations, Council. I've done that a hundred times, Roger, that's the worst one I've ever done. You got your little, you don't hold the candle, judge it.
I'll follow you.
Yeah, that's right, I did you, I think, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, awards, yeah, Sam, they got me all jacked up. Stand up. Would you all please stand, let Sam lead us in the word of the Lord?
I will pray, but you guys all have to agree with me that these guys will behave themselves while I'm in charge, okay? Father, we are so grateful to have you as Lord. And your word says, if any man lack wisdom, let him ask of God, who giveth liberally and upgradeth not. We are asking you to give this city council wisdom, as to how to make the decisions that need to be made for this city, and that will cause this city to prosper and be a blessing to all who come, who enter here, and we ask for it in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Join me in the flag slip, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sam, before you sit down, tell us what's going on, it's, we're in blessing baskets mode.
Yeah, they're not ready to do that this week, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're starting to sort and fill, uh, collect all of the, the boxes that have been filled up, and then they'll start sorting it this week, and getting ready to pull them out. So, if anybody wants to volunteer and help, see them over at.
Free Will Baptist Church.
Free Will Baptist, over on Elm and, yeah. I've only lived here thirty years, people, forgive me.
Thank you, Sam.
So, anyway, it's a busy.
Yeah, they got, they got a Facebook page, they got listed times, you wanna go on there, and Paul and Derry today. I know of all the school kids get up there, and they're getting everything together with, with that as well.
When's tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, Kai School kids are tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, yeah.
I forget who else is tomorrow, or today.
Thank you, Sam. All right, we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. We got a proclamation here, this is a proclamation, Office of the Mayor, General Aviation Appreciation Month. Whereas the City of Reno is the state of Oklahoma, has significant interest in the continued locality of the general aviation aircraft manufacturing, aviation education institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and the Everino Regional Airport have an economic impact directly on the City of Reno, and whereas Oklahoma's home to a hundred and thirty-six public use airports, which serve eight thousand five hundred and ninety-three pilots and five thousand six hundred and twenty-two active general aviation aircraft. Publicly owned aviation airports in Oklahoma, supporter of over six hundred and ninety-three million dollars in total annual economic activity, and whereas general aviation is not, is not only supported by Oklahoma's economy, it's an overall quality of life by supported by all emergency medical, healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, disaster relief services, and transporting businesses, travelers, to their destinations quickly and safely. Whereas the United States faces a shortage of aviation professionals with estimated need of two hundred and twelve thousand pilots in North America over the next twenty years in general aviation services as a pipeline for those seeking careers in aviation. Whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit and congressional oversight should be in place for this system to ensure that it remains a public system and serves all communities of all sizes. I therefore, Matt White, might resolve, with all the powers vested in me, as mayor of the city of Reno in Oklahoma and all the citizens, do Uber on the claim, December two thousand nineteen, to be General Aviation Appreciation Month, and celebrate this with all of our pilots and our airport that we're very proud of. Thank you. All right. Thank you. New business deletions, contentious to the agenda time, are there any? If not, we will consider you, the following items be considered routine by the Everino City Council, being acted with one motion. Should it be desired on that item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city manager recommends one motion, the approval of October eighth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the Everino City Council, approval of the minutes of the October twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting of the Everino City Council, approval of the minutes of the November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting of the Everino City Council, due to lack of quorum, no minutes exist, approval of minutes on November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, special meeting of the Everino City Council, number five, acknowledgement of a donation received by the Everino Carnegie Library in memory of Donald Tolly, from the multiple donors, in an amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. Acknowledged donation received by the Everino Carnegie Library, memorial of F.W. Hosenworth, M.D., and Alan B. Huglinworth, in the amount of one thousand dollars. Acknowledged of the recognized donation for Frontier Chevrolet and the Chevrolet Corporation to Everino Police Department, in the amount of ten thousand dollars for first responders appreciation. Acknowledge, Ken, I hope that they're, I guess they'll be safe out there, but I hope their place doesn't burn down, they didn't give you guys any money. Acknowledged and recognized one ounce emergency responders grant received by the Everino Fire Department, in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Acknowledged of donation received by the Everino Fire Department from Inlet Minstream Operation LP, in the amount of four hundred dollars. Acknowledged recognition of donation, City of Reno for mis-sellation donors, in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for Legent Park Lights, in Legent Park. Approval resolution twenty dash zero one ten, resolution regarding the selection of Lochner for ODOT bridge inspections. Number twelve, approval of letter of intent for the two thousand and twenty small city CBG application. Number thirteen, approval of resolution twenty dash zero eleven, a resolution of the City of Reno Council establishing meeting dates, times, and places for regular public meetings for the City of Reno for calendar year two thousand and twenty. Acknowledged meeting dates and times and places for various boards, committees, and authorities for the calendar year two thousand and twenty. And approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. And then number sixteen, approval of claims requiring council authorization for the period beginning of the first, two thousand nineteen, and ending November thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Goodness.
Want to pull one, two, three, and four, does anyone have anything?
Sure.
Other? Then I want to approve five through sixteen.
I got a motion to approve five through sixteen?
Second.
I got a second by Ryder, roll call start with Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronster, Mayor White.
Yes. Done a motion for one through four, someone, I got a motion by Ballhorn?
Second.
Second by Ryder, roll call start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Stand.
Councilwoman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronster, Mayor White.
Yes. All right, we're going to, gee, audience participation, anyone having an item, a business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time and state your name. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes, any item being presented must pertain to the City of Reno business. Anything? Anyone? All right, we'll move on to nomination, nomination and appointment of a vice mayor.
Nominate JT.
Got a motion to mention JT? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? I make a motion that we, uh, by affirmation appoint JT Crowster as vice mayor. I make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ballhorn, roll call, let's start with, uh, Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Walhorne. Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White.
Yes. All right, discussion to the direction possible action through the claim for Schwartz Company in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion.
As this is an authority.
Yeah.
Okay, motion. Motion for authority by Robinson, second by, yep, Ballhorn, roll call, start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Walhorne.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White.
Yes. Oh, same, same, sorry, same. Motion carries three to one, one conviction. All right, number nineteen, to conduct a public hearing, consideration request by Alan Seeline and Margaret Ann Knight to reclassify the zoning district approximately seventy-three acres southwest corner of sixty-six highway, main road from rural agricultural A-one to heavy industrial I-three, said property being northwest corner section nineteen township twelve north range six, west in Briney, Canadian County, Oklahoma. I now consider public hearing open. Okay, Dustin. See, I saw him walk in. There he is. Get up there.
Hello.
How are you? Okay, Dustin, this is a rezone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's currently, uh, A-one.
That's correct.
Uh, everything to the, uh, well, this is back up. On the east side of it is outside of Seeline.
That's correct.
And then everything to the, uh, north is zoned.
Uh, to the north is the Canadian County Children's Justice Center. It is zoned A-one agricultural and they have no real reason to change that. It'll forever, I believe it'll be forever public land. Um, to the west is zoned I-three heavy industrial with the, uh, conditional use permit. That's, uh, the east, the new east expansion of OKC West.
Now, we went through the expansion of OKC West, but I thought up front was zoned, was it, was it different?
No, they went with the heavy industrial zoning on the whole thing.
I-three all of it.
And, and then got the, uh, conditional use permit for the, uh.
Livestock, livestock on the, on the south side of it.
But, 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 but hang on, I, I'm right what I'm saying. I mean, I, I want to make sure I'm correct. So it's zoned I, I-three, but it has conditions on that one side, all right?
On the south side where they're intending to expand the stock.
Okay, but it's zoned heavy across the street.
That's correct.
I mean, we've, we've, we've done this, this is a corridor. I don't see any problem with it, went before planning permission, didn't it?
It did.
Any questions?
Uh, had a couple of questions, but it, it passed.
Any protest, passed unanimously?
Yes.
Any, 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 huh? Yeah, any, uh, uh, any concerns?
Uh, no protests, no.
No protests, anything else, all right? Thank you. Anybody here to speak against the property? Anybody with concerns against the property? I now consider public hearing closed. Move on to B, discussion consideration possible action. An ordinance number ninety-two twelve, an ordinance requested by Alan Seeline and Margaret Ann Knight to reclassify the zoning district approximately seventy-three acres at the southwest corner, highway sixty-six and South Main Road from rural agriculture A-one to heavy industrial I-three, said property being northwest corner section nineteen township twelve north range six, more or less in the area in the, okay, carry up. Make a motion. We got a motion for approval? We got a second, roll call, let's start with Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sorry.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White.
Yes, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to twenty. To conduct a, a, a public hearing, consider a request for the Rousch Coleman Homes to vacate the alley within block thirteen, the Fair Edition in City of Reno, Oklahoma according to the recorded plan there, there, therefore. I now consider public hearing open. Okay, there you are, Dustin. Scared me. All right, we're here to conduct a public hearing to close the, uh, alley. All right, uh, I went down there, I talked to Quentin and his wife, and I want to make sure they were satisfied because we basically have, is there someone here with the other house? Is that you, the new, the new house?
No, previous.
Okay, but you don't know, you don't know all the.
I got the middle one out back door.
There you go, that's what I'm asking. So the new house is you.
Yeah.
And you're in between Quentin.
Right.
I got you, now I'm with you. All right, so there's three houses there, and I've been down there several times to make sure, I want to make sure we're all good neighbors and we're working good and it's looking great down there. Uh, uh, I mean, it really is. It's going to improve that house market down there. I think you guys have done a great job. It's going to fit in that neighborhood, I think it looks good. I love the new house. And I think you guys have made some improvements in your place, so it's working out for everybody. Now, a couple of questions I got to kind of ask this deal. I'm kind of tying this to it, and I know I probably shouldn't, but, but I'm going to anyway. That's just kind of how I roll. I want to make sure we're all right, and I want to make sure things tied together. We have some concerns with the water that's back behind Mr. Quentin's house and a little bit behind your house. And I want to make sure if we vacate that alley, because we built that, you all built those up a little bit, I want to make sure that water runs out on, on M Street. And there used to be a little cut in that curb there. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and I want to make sure that curb that comes around there and cuts out on that deal. I don't mind vacating the alley to a certain degree, because I think I talked to you and, and you're okay with it.
The alley, I'm okay with the alley not being there.
All right, and you're okay with the alley not being there?
No, I, I need the alley.
Okay, you need the alley, and then you're not okay with the alley not being there? You don't want to close the alley? Huh?
He needs the alley.
You need the alley, all right. So Quentin, you're good on this one. Let me take one at a time. Now, on your, on your, on your, on your deal, I looked, went down there, looked, and I had Darren send me some pictures. And I took some pictures Bart did. And you have, you have access, you have a main driveway that goes all the way back to the access your, to your, your property. So you really, if we close that alley, it's not going to affect you one bit. You can get absolutely to the back of your property. You have a, almost a, what is it, Mark? What do you think?
Sixty feet.
I was going to say fifty, but you think sixty feet driveway all the way back to the back of the property. So if you're going to build some structure and you haven't yet, you, you have plenty of room in order to do that as back or whatever else that you're going to do. My, my point is, I'm, I'm not trying to put them on spot, but I just, I got to ask these questions. My point to you is, if you're saying you don't have access, like, well, that's what, I assume that's what you're going to say. But you don't have access like this guy. You do have access and you don't care. So I'm just trying to pick, I'm trying to pick, trying to pick these off to make sure we're on the right track here. Because you have access. Okay.
He has access.
Okay, there you go. Now, you don't, you don't want to close that because of, of, of one.
The reason.
Okay, hang on, I thought I was done with you there, go ahead.
The reason why he wants it because, uh, he is a, you know, a trailer and he's, he's going to just, he can't really go in and back out on a trailer, so he just wants kind of like to go in.
But what I'm trying to tell you is the alley, you're going to have sixty feet off that road. I mean, I got a picture of it. You got sixty feet off that road. You might not, you might not be able to come in that way, uh, but you're wanting to circle back around maybe. But if they're wanting, if they're wanting to back those houses where they can put those fences up there and realign that deal for just that one, that one, well, I've got two houses now. That one, but your particular deal, you have access.
Yeah, he has access, but he's still, he just, he wants to have it there.
Well, I understand this, but just wanting to have it there doesn't do the point where you're denied access.
The reason is that he uses his trailer and he likes back in and, and everything and in the front and sometimes it's kind of hard for him, so.
Okay.
That's the deal.
Okay. I got you. I'm going to go to him next, okay? So now, you, 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 tell me what your, what your situation is, sir.
I know.
Tell me your name, I'm sorry.
Red, Redbury.
Okay.
And I normally park my trailers in the back because there's no way I could put, if I got driveway that I could put one trailer in and a truck, but I also have my wife's car. Um, so I park the trailers in the back. I've got them all pulled out right now because I can clean all the trees out of there.
Sure.
But that's the only place I can get in is the backyard, is through that alley.
Well, and once again, all these new neighborhoods, they don't have alleys at all.
I understand.
And I understand, you understand, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to get everything we can, I mean, because all the other nineteen houses, they won't have alleys either and they're okay with it. So I've just got two people that, that have, and I got to figure out how to make this deal work. You all want the alley completely closed. Would you consider doing it midway down?
Well, that's actually, sir, that's what we came up with last meeting, we don't mind that.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm, I'm asking that, I, I don't, I, so go ahead. Dustin, why did you get in here and stop me from doing all this, that's what you already had?
There are two ordinances in front of you, or, uh.
I'm in public here.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. There's, but when it comes to doing the ordinance in part B, um, one of them is to vacate the entire alley and the other one is to vacate, um, the northern half of the alley remaining, leaving the rest open. The, uh, the language is just to, to change the, the lots that it's in between.
Do you have it?
So what's the purpose of, um, potentially closing the whole?
The, do you want to speak to that?
I'm sorry, I need to back off of the fresh ones. The, the original intent of the alley is we're putting up fences, privacy, it's the one we're going to provide. Um, there's not really a usage issue.
I see.
Typically, alleys breed other issues, like maintenance required. It's the same thing, because then you're creating a hidden area for element to be in, so to speak. And there's a maintenance issue, so you've got to maintain that area. So, I mean, it was talked upon early on in this deal. It, uh, it'd kind of be a win for everybody if you got rid of the alley because property owners have to leave the lots. Uh, they would be maintained, there, there wouldn't be a necessary maintenance issue on the city and there wouldn't be some hidden corridor of five houses hidden by six or privacy fences that have safety issues. So, all that being said, I want an alley. Keep an alley if not buying, but personally, I don't, I don't live there.
Well, the main, the main thing is, like you said, you talked about, let's, let's go back to the initial layout of what, it was kind of opposed that we kind of accepted. You know, we, we would have bids on this, don't forget, we have proposals on this to see who would want to build. We had a couple of different proposals. Both proposals, both because of the majority of the landowners own each other in half of it. It gives them bigger lots and allow them to, allow them to do more yards, you know? And that's the whole point of the whole thing, you know? And, and if they later on in life, you know, I saw someone think that someone said they don't have garages back there. If they want to add a garage, they can make later on. But if you shorten that up, then it might affect the offsets for the ordinance to where they can have that garage and how far it has to set back. So, you know, that's, this is the problem with this alley deal is that the other nineteen people, twenty, I'm making that up, want to close the alley, or no, one doesn't care, the other nineteen do, and then I got two to do. And I understand, I understand all sides, but don't get me wrong. We're just trying to figure out, you know, we're, we're not real big on taking care of alleys. I know that for a fact, Jeff, are we? I mean, we don't take care of them now. And, and, and really, it's the property owners, you know, to do that because we moved that up. And once again, when we vacate the alley, Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, when we vacate the whole alley, you own to the middle of the alley. Your property line, you own, you will absolutely own that property at that point. But Quentin, you're game.
Seven feet.
I was going to say ten feet, okay, seven feet on the whole process.
I've got a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you tip away the alley and move my yard up further back, there's a power pole that can be sitting right in the center of my yard.
W- w- once again, I, I'm not trying, but here's what Bob has, there's always going to be an easement back there no matter what. And, well, let's take, I'm just picking on Roger because he's sitting there beside me. I try to pick on, I can't pick on Bob, maybe I can, I can pick on Tracy and Bob. I can pick on Tracy and him for sure. But they have utilities back behind their house. Tracy does, and so does Bob, where they live. And that they have the right to come back there in your yard and hook up cable or whatever else. A lot of them have electrical boxes or phone boxes back there, back behind there. They just have their fence, you have a fence up there. It's just an older area and we have those alleys. All new areas don't have alleys. And, and so basically, that's what we're trying to, the new development is trying to get away from the old. Does that make sense? So what you're, what you're going to go through is what everybody would go through that doesn't have an alley, which is the majority of Reno, the side that older part. Does that make sense?
I understand.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not important, I'm just saying that's just how, how we got to deal with it and look at it.
Okay, uh, my question is, if you do do away with the alley, can that pole be moved back towards the back of the property?
Once again, there's still an easement back there from utility easement from everybody.
Okay.
Your sewer line is still back there, right? The, the, the water line is still back there?
I got you.
Not the water line, the, the sewer line, electric and everything else is all still back there. So it won't change any of that, like it does in Tracy's yard or, or Roger's yard. Yours is up front of it, Timmy. Mine's up front.
That'd be an issue, you'd have to take up an O G D.
Yeah. And then, hang on, man, hang on, let me get one. You're getting too excited, like Dustin, you're getting too excited. Okay, does that answer your question, sir?
So if, if, just, just incorrect. If I'm able to get the pole extended out to the back of the property is what I wanted to. If you're going to move my fence line from where it's at to the middle of the alley, it's going to, that can't, is there any, no, I'm asking this, do I have to go through O G D to get that pole moved?
Yes, yes, because they have an easement, they have an easement in your yard no matter what anyway. Does that make sense?
I understand.
So, so to your, to your yard, sorry, to your yard. So when you do that, then you're just going to have to extend it to. And, and really, I mean, let me tell you something else about this whole thing. It goes back to the safety issue. We're not trying to downplay your, your, your needs or your wants. But Kim and I worked on this a long time ago. Kim Brown and I, Chief Brown and I, uh, we're keeping that park right beside there. We're, we're doing that for a reason. And the reason is that if we keep that park there, then, then if someone, pedophiles or some other things move in that area, we can, uh, hold that accountable, we can have them, somebody think they can't do that. That protects you and everything else.
I agree.
We like the fences and the alley closed in that park area because it just, it makes everything nice and neat and clean. Does that make sense?
Okay, I've got one more question. If we do move it and remove the alley, are you all going to put the fences all the way across? Or is that a sudden addition with me being a property owner, I'll have to do myself?
Well, you know what? Hang on, that could be something, I, I'm telling you, they, they won't do that because they don't own the, the, the public park, the park. We didn't. But, but I would, I would, I would be considering, I think it'd be fair if we make everybody else put fences up and you're going to put nineteen fences all the way around, then I think the city should absolutely, Jeff, Jeremy, I'm just talking out loud here, that should be one of our conditions, that we put a fence up on our side. It, you know, to block you and us off because we don't want the park patrons going back to your room, you know, to you anyways. Does that make sense? So I don't have a problem putting the fence up on the city side, back on our property.
Right.
The, on the, on the back of.
I understand what you're saying.
Not, not the sides, but, but, but the park.
So if we have to go in there and change water lines or any of that, who's gonna pay for all that?
Well, water lines are all up front.
Oh, I thought they ran through.
I, I said that accidentally.
Okay.
Water lines are all up front, so we, we do, we do that all, we do that, we do that up front, because all meters are up front with a meter box. So, and that, those are just from here to there, in our right of way, in our city right of way. And then we're, we're responsible from, from our main to that meter, which we move the line back, and that line's in that area.
That's the comment I have. The seven feet we're talking about, I'd like to alter that. Reason being is I believe that sewer line is, we can sell it all the way up the middle, because it's literally right in the middle.
You wanna go one side or the other?
I'd like to go one side or the other. And since there are existing property owners like yourself, and you, and you, if you do decide to do that, I'll give you all the larger side of it, we just don't want that fence sitting on the sewer line.
Well...
That's my only note, right?
But now you're, and now you're talking to us, with, you're speaking without us, but we're your partner.
You're our partner.
But our partner, we'll, I will, we'll have to talk to Roger, but I don't see the problem with us doing the same thing because we're the only one, and we can move the fence on our side of the sewer line, and that'd give you more land to save, is that right, Matt? And I think that'd be more, that'd be fair for you all anyway, Quentin.
Well, the sewer line is right behind our garage or our shed.
But it'd be, but we'll put that, we'll put that fence on the other side of it.
Make sure it's on the opposite side.
Make sure it's on the opposite side, so it doesn't straddle that deal. We'll, we'll give you plenty of room, and we'll take more of our land away, is what he's trying to say. His land and then whatever the park, our land is in, in order to put the fence up.
I'm worried.
And that would give you, that would give you three more land.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm worried about the rent that's concerned.
I know you are, and I'm not done with you yet. I'm not to you yet. Okay.
Are they gonna deed that land?
Hang on, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, let's deal with one, let's deal with, let's deal with the garage, because when, yes, when, when, are you asking the alley?
Yes.
When, when we do that, then yes, they will, they will do what they call instrument documentation at the courthouse. And, and once we vacate it, Mr. Reinhart will go through the proper processes. He'll file a paperwork with the, with the court, the county clerk. And it'll vacate that, we're just vacating by ordinance.
We don't run a file anything?
They will though, well, they need us.
Can we file our ordinances vacating at the city, I don't do that.
Yeah, to, to close it permanently, you have to go through district court.
Right, right, just like a street.
On our side, no, we, we, well, we've never had to do it on our side.
Matt's point is to close it permanently, then you have to go through district court.
And then the property is then split in half.
I got you, okay.
To alter that split in half, we would need to deed, I believe.
That's right, to alter the split in half, you have to deed.
Yes, sir.
So if we asked about closing the north end, would that relieve them from these two who...
We're completely the north end.
Okay.
So it doesn't affect any existing...
Yeah, but hang on, they're the north end of the project, the south, not really the middle, just really barely the south end. And that's, you say there's a, there's two ordinances, you're on to the one, but there's other orders, it doesn't. But what I'm saying, Tracy, is, is that we have one that already has access. And if we don't do that, then it kind of throws everything else off, as far as the fencing and everything else. Is that right, Matt? So, I mean, it's almost like, in my opinion, just my opinion, which is, well, I, I love it, if you do that, then you're throwing the project caught a caddywhap us off on the other side of it, and it's not gonna look right. Yes.
Okay, yes. You'll put the fence up?
Yes.
I have no points.
There you go, see, that's why I'm here, I'm one of the brokers. Well, honestly, I mean, I'm not picking on you, but, but I kinda am. You have access, you have something that these guys don't have. You got, you got, you got, I know, I know, but he has sixty foot, is that right, Mark? He got sixty foot there that they, that these people don't have. I was concerned with these people more than I was, I mean, not that I'm throwing him under the bus, but this guy has access. He has double the width of a two-car garage. Does that make sense? Is that right, Mark?
Yeah, what he's wanting to do is drive in and exit the other way.
But, but once again, that's convenience versus, that's convenience versus you're throwing out safety, you're throwing out compatibility, you're throwing out the, the, the neighborhood. It's not putting a, it's putting a change on what he's wanting to do, but it's not putting a hinder to it. And I'm with him, he's getting more land, but he wants protection of the fence. Yes.
Okay, I have a handful of grandparents.
Hang on, I can't hear you.
I have a lot of grandparents that live over my house, and I have to take them out and defend the park and place all the time. Um, when you put the fence up, can you put a gate so that I can get, like, wall or rounds?
I, I don't have a problem with that, and I wouldn't have a problem with it being locked on your side. And if all three of you want to do that, I wouldn't have a problem with that on our side. But that's something Mr. Reinhart and Mr. Frazier's gonna have to determine. I, I wouldn't see that being a problem. I mean, you know, I mean, it's not gonna be that much more money for them.
So, okay. If we do that, and we put it down the middle, each person gets their half.
That's...
It's vacated.
Yes, but what Matt's saying, we're, we're gonna cheat a little bit.
Right.
We're gonna give them a little bit more because of the sewer line in the middle to offset the fence, like Sue's saying, so where the, it's not right here in the middle, it's over here on the side, so they can access it.
But if you vacate that property and they go down to the district court and they get it put in their name, and then our sewer line goes bad, what do we do about the fences and the...
They got no, the, the right of way doesn't change. We still have, we still have the easement, we have the easement no matter what.
Okay.
And we have to vacate the easement in order to do that, is that correct, Matt? And the reason, and the only way we can do that is through what we're doing and then, then go the other documentation, like we did at Safeway, or whatever you wanna call it.
And that is, the property owners at the new Dollar General, they went to district court.
They went to district court.
So that would be the property owner that's responsible.
But they came to us, they, they came to us to get the blessing, and we did that.
Right.
So if Quentin and them wanted to do that, they'd all have to get together and come together, including him, including us, in his wills of the two, and then justify us, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it, it really won't happen that way, but, but that's a good question. It would if it was normally two occupiers, just like it was over there. Any other questions?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is there gonna be access to the park from the back, from the back of his yard?
Uh, we could, we, I, I think it goes back to the point to where we, we, we can, we can probably make it that way, you know? And I said, we just need to look, I don't want a problem with that, I mean, I don't have a problem with you all getting the fence out to, from your area. I think it goes back to two things, three people need to look. Four people need to look at this. Chief Brown needs to look at the safety issues of how that's gonna operate, how it's gonna work. Mr. Frazier's gonna have to look at that, that's the same manager, determine, you know, where he wants that, where he wants that fence and how he wants it to look, you know? That's his, that's his, his, his call. I think it's Jeff's determination, Department Works Director, to how we're gonna maintain it and maintenance, and it's gonna be set off the ground, you know, gonna be, uh, steel poles or, you know, wooden poles or whatever else. And I think Mr. Reinhart needs to sign off on it. So, I don't see a problem with it, I, I assume everybody up here doesn't either. But I think it was, we can't answer those questions because those people will need to look at that and make decisions based on their professional ability. Does that make sense? Quentin?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay. So we kinda got the alley worked out, I got two yeses and one no. I got you. Now let's go to the drainage and the sidewalk. We're gonna put sidewalks up on these, on the, you, you're required to put sidewalks on your deal based on your building permit. Yeah, you are, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So when you got your building permit, you gotta put a sidewalk up to match that, because I wanna make sure they're all sidewalks here. Now, Quentin and you, you all have sidewalks, but now there's sidewalks all the way around. And Matt, part of our deal, you're gonna complete that sidewalk, is that correct?
I'd like to discuss that today.
Well, I, I, I think, I think the city's gonna, I mean, and we gotta find a, and that's on our property anyway. I mean, I say our property, it's, it's our right of way. And, and I mean, there's no sense in not, we're trying to do a program here where we're having to have sidewalks everywhere. I don't want to not, not have sidewalks. And we gotta have that, so I really want that done too. And then, the only other thing, issue I think that I have is the water issue with the flume. And you got it worked out, is that right?
Sort of.
Okay, tell, tell...
That's how the sidewalk came to be.
Okay.
And, 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 you're standing there.
Yeah, come on up, just tell it.
Here, here's the issue, every time we've had an issue with the adjoining property with Clemens, I'm, I'm all for a solution, and I like a solution too. But this is the third time I'm addressing issues with that property. And the issue is, is now there's a concern that the water apparently has never come through his property. And according to the city engineer, there's a stem wall installed there to keep the water from coming onto his property because actually the water always did go through that property. And this, this clevis that was removed from the concrete, uh, that, that used to be there that allowed water to flow out, that may have been there, but I don't think any water ever actually flowed through it because there's two tree stumps the size of a small Volkswagen that are sitting on that property line, that I don't see how water ever got there to begin with. And I'm all for a solution on getting the water to go down that property line. And quite honestly, that property line's not that property line anyway. The, the property line is actually two feet over and runs through the middle of the Clemens AC unit. So originally, because their property encroaches on this property. So first visit is, I'm just gonna deed that property over to them.
Gotcha.
Second solution is, we're gonna clean up that property line, we're gonna put a fence down it, try and make everybody happy. We're gonna take away an alley, trying, trying, trying to be a team player.
Sure.
And, and, and now, we wanna put in some more infrastructure down this side yard to make a situation with water flow that's always been there, uh, perfect for future maintenance because if we use a grass swale, uh, and again, the engineer even said it, if you put a grass swale here, people aren't gonna maintain it very well, eventually it may back up. We know they're probably not gonna maintain it. And I don't know how that burden falls on me to put in concrete flume so that I can alleviate future maintenance issues for, for the Clemens or whoever lives there. Uh, but that leads me to another issue where I'm concerned about touching property that, and taking responsibility that wasn't originally mine. Because now if I take a block cap and cut into the Clemens' front yard and I find their water line, now I'm spending fifteen hundred dollars redoing the water system. And, and where's this rabbit hole end? And I'd prefer to not do the city walk, and I'll do the flume because it's property line, I join it. I'd like to deed the property over to the Clemens that their AC unit is sitting on right now, so we don't have to have any other issues with that. And I'd like to do what I originally said, which was put, uh, a common fence between me and them so that they have their privacy and we're not encroaching on their privacy. But I have, I have concerns about touching property that's not mine, especially now.
I, I got you, let, let me help you out a little bit. I'm with you, and I understand where you're at. But here we are at the final solution. We got, and we all gotta work together, because we're going, we're getting ready to get this whole thing done. You're selling houses, and you're gonna be out of him, his hair, and, you know, I'm assuming you guys aren't gonna trade Christmas cards or anything else.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that.
I joke with you, I'm saying, but we're about done with it. But we're almost close, so let's, let's just finish it out and see if we can cover everybody else. I'm with you, I wanna make sure Clemens' property, we gotta get them the, the footage to get that corrected. I wanna make sure...
I'm giving it to them.
I know, and I, and I wanna make sure that's good for you, Quentin, we gotta do that. Because if not, you're gonna have problems later on if you ever try to sell that place. And I wanna get it corrected now, because the problem is, since all these houses done a fair dish, we're just, we're, we're dealing with, we're dealing with an old part of town, you know? So now we're correcting all these parts, I know everybody understands that. So if you could do that, Matt, I really would appreciate it, and you said you would. I, I really want the sidewalks because it completes our project, it makes the neighborhood look great. We'll, we'll help you with the issue, you know, as far as being on our property, as far as our right of way, everything else, and we can maybe take some of that responsibility for that. I mean, to do that, to maybe help, if you help us with the sidewalk, then we maybe could have you, hire you to do the sidewalk, and you'll be working for us. If there's anything that Quentin has a problem with, then it'll be the City of El Reno and not you. Does that make sense?
That would help, I mean, you know what I'm saying.
And I'm not done yet, I got you. I, I know, I know, I know, Roger, I'm way off, Matt.
Actually, may have some more horse trading for you, if you...
I got you, but I'm just trying to get this deal broken out for these cutters here. So, and if we did that, then that might help alleviate that. And then, I do think we need to, I, I think we need the concrete flume. And, and I know you don't wanna do that. The only thing I'm disagreeing with you about is that we moved a lot of dirt in there, we raised those deals up, and we have changed what was there before.
Correct.
So, I just wanna make sure for liability for you and for them. And once we sign off on it and we're good to go, I'm fine with it. And really, I'm okay with it, because I, I think you need, you're gonna need to do it anyway at some point in time before we close on the other ones. But I do want, we, we do need to do that, does that make sense? If we can do that, I think we can take the burden off, you deal with him and you just deal with us directly. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
I understand. Okay, Quentin, would that make you happy?
As long as there's some, okay.
Here we go.
If what he does to fix the problem is, and you're gonna fix it, am I gonna get stuck under the city of El Reno? I'm gonna fix it.
Okay.
That's what I'm...
And what I'm trying to tell you is Roger's getting, having, about ready to have a coronary heart attack over here. No, no, I'm joking, but I'm not, because he is. All that has to do is civilly, I'm trying to help you broker this deal so we don't have to get there. And, and really, we shouldn't be having to do that, but it's important that we try to make everybody happy to make this deal done. And I want everybody happy, I know Matt does too, and I know you do too. So if I can get some of this worked out, because really, you know, Jackie and I kinda get, I mean, a lot of this stuff, you know, everybody thinks it's a city's deal, a lot of this stuff, we can only take some of the action up here, then it has to be, it's the rights of the constitution, you can do it civilly and you're gonna do it. I want, I'm trying to broker these deals to where we can get some ground rules to where we can be good neighbors.
Yes, sir.
You know what makes good neighbors? Good fences. So, and, and good deals.
All the property to the north of me has gained about eighteen to two foot, and I versus two foot.
I agree.
All the property behind me now, all the water breaks my direction. They're out there running sprinklers on their side, and it's all coming down into my yard.
I got you.
Just from a sprinkler. So what we gonna have me down for, what am I gonna do with three yards worth of water coming out my yard?
And plus the...
While I'm lower than everybody else.
Once again, honestly, if, if, if he was to buy that property from me, or from Jeremy, being Jeremy, uh, 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 Reno, uh, you know, the developer, you'd have to sit, the developer doesn't anything do to the city at all.
Oh, I understand that.
I'm just saying, now that we did this deal because of the deal that we owned the land at one time, I'm asking him to make these concessions in here, does that make sense, Matt? That's the only reason why we're here, kinda where we're at.
Okay.
That's why I'm a little different from what Roger, it would be a normal deal that where, you know, if you do that, then you have to take him to court civilly, and that's just what you do, because we don't have any complication of...
I understand that.
But I'm, what I'm saying is, Quentin, if we can help work the deal out, where there's a flume in there, we cut the little V out, put a little plate over the sidewalk, get the water running out, we, we might have to help with some of that because that sidewalks are, so I'm, I'm with you. But it's gonna look silly if we don't have sidewalks down there, and I'm gonna look silly if we don't have sidewalks down there. Uh, uh, and then we're pro sidewalks, I mean, I want sidewalks. So, uh, does, does that make, if the, do those issues help you with your decision on the alley or anything else?
A little bit, I mean, until I see something done there, I'm, I don't know what they're gonna, I'm kinda, you're asking me to say, um, blindly, that I'm okay with something that I can't...
I understand that. All right. But do, do you understand what we're trying to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do.
And I'm trying to help you.
No?
I know you're helping, and I, and I want to. If, if we can make this work, I think we can make this happen. I think it puts everybody in. Okay. I know everybody's tickled to death, but does, does everybody kinda, we're, I think we're moving the right direction.
But...
Yeah, hang on.
It has changed the biography of the land, and all those houses on his street behind me, they're draining towards my yard.
And what I'm trying to tell you is...
Not only the ones beside me that are higher than me, but that's all gonna come my way.
And what I'm saying, if we can put a plant back here to help alleviate that, then I think that'll be, that'll be good for us. But what I'm trying to tell you is, that would, that would almost be a civil action, and we don't have anything to do with it, Quentin.
I, you know, I was even for if they buried a French drain in there, I don't care. As long as there's somewhere for that water to get to the street without...
But, but timeout, I'm with him, but I'm with him. You and I agreed that you kinda wanted the flume there. We can't, we, we gotta, we gotta decide on one thing, and I'm, that's where his frustration is. We can't back up and switch gears to fourth, first to fourth. We gotta decide on what we're gonna do, and we're gonna do it, and then we're gonna cut bait and do it. We gotta get done with the sidewalk, that's what you told me to do, I mean, I want a sidewalk. The flume and the, and I was, we gotta get that, we gotta get that two-foot corrected. That'll come back and haunt you.
We do.
And that's not his fault or anybody else's fault, that's just, that's the way it was back then.
I mean, I, I won't say that.
I, I got you, but you know what I'm saying, if we can get that done, does that cover your concerns?
That covers my, I just have a problem with the two-foot line to begin with because we all know Mr. Redwood lived there, and I'm pretty sure he knew where his property line was.
But once again, surveying and everything else at courthouse, that ain't us.
There you go. But also now there's a change, is what I'm getting at.
Well, there's a change because they're due property owner, I mean, you know, what happens is someone surveyed it and someone, someone bought the property and they, they, they come and change that pin that hadn't been checked. That pin probably hadn't been checked in, in sixty years, that's what happened. Okay, yes, sir, and then you're next, him, him first. Okay.
Okay, we have two questions?
Yes, sir.
So since if you agree on taking that, the fence or the alley?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that maybe it could be recompensed by, um, throwing the sidewalk?
Tell me, you know?
We don't really wanna do the side, the, the driveway. We don't really wanna do the side, the, the driveway, so if you're gonna take the, the, the alley, can you throw in our sidewalk?
Can I put your sidewalk in?
For taking the alley?
No.
No?
No. See, you've got a permit. You're different than these other guys. You've got a permit. You build a brand new deal. And we made an ordinance this council had, because we made commitments. If you build new construction, you gotta build a sidewalk for your house. So when you all bought that permit a year and a half ago, I, I checked it, you're required to put that sidewalk in, and you signed off on that. That's not us. Now, when you get the sidewalk built, we'll take, we'll take that sidewalk and we'll use that as our property, but, but we'll do that for you. But that's all we can do. All right.
And also, um, when you're gonna put the fence, when you put the fence, there's like some tree, tree trunks, if they're, they're in the way, are you guys gonna remove that?
I don't think so. Because we're gonna put the fence on our side, but it'd be, our side being Roush Coleman and the City of Reno. So, we're gonna remove whatever's on our side, our side being the City of Reno and Roush Coleman. But, but, but hang on, I'm just, we're putting, we're removing, don't get in, interrupt me. We're moving, we're, we're moving on our side of property, not yours. Cause you're on that property now. Is that right? Okay. Sam, I can get out of here if I were you too.
Sorry.
I don't blame you. I wanna go with you. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it is.
Matt? Now, your two stumps are gonna have to be removed because of the flume. Right?
On what?
The stumps.
Your stumps, where one stump I know has to be. Okay, two.
There's two stumps down in there.
Okay, sit there. There, go ahead and fill the flume.
One of them's kinda split between both properties. I mean, a little bit of the tree growing in my yard.
I got you. They'll be removed. Okay. Any other questions? Now that we completely gave Roger Rudhar a coronary heart attack. Any other questions on this? I think we got there halfway. All right. All right, I make a motion, or any other questions? I consider this hearing closed. Now we're going to be discussion consideration possible actual ordinance number ninety-two thirteen, the ordinance requested by Roush Coleman Homes to vacate the alley within block thirteen. Don't leave yet. I'm gonna go ahead and do it here. I don't know how they're gonna vote. I mean, I know you're agreements, but I just wanna make sure you follow through. You've been here this long. Ordinance number ninety-two thirteen, ordinance requested by Roush Coleman to vacate the alley in block thirteen of the fair addition. The City of Reno, according to the recorded plat, therefore, I make a motion that we vacate the alley on the full vacation, and that's, uh, is that? Ninety, yeah, it's ninety-two thirteen, is that right? Okay. And I make a motion, we, we do the whole, whole alley based on considerations that we talked about today and getting those situations worked out with Roush Coleman. I'm good. Don't say you're good.
I'll say this.
I got a motion. I got a second. We'll call, we'll start with Ryan.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bullard?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Okay. Uh, I'll get with you guys, okay? We'll, we'll, we'll get with you on the fence, everything else. Okay? Thank you all. All right, now, this public hearing, created by Carnot's Incorporated to reclassify the zoning district from multifamily residential R-three to automotive and commercial recreation, C-A-R, on a tract located at two-ten South Boynton Avenue, will particularly describe as lots seven through twelve of block six of Lakeview Second Edition, the City of Reno, Kanan County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat, therefore, I now consider this public hearing open. All right, Dustin, where you at? Dustin, Mr. Carnot went to the planning commission.
That's correct.
And he, uh, he bought the house that was located back behind there, and it was zoned, what?
Uh, that's zoned R-three multifamily residential.
Okay. And, and Mr. Carnot tore the house down.
That's correct.
Graded everything off. Now he wants to put basically a, a fence, or he wants to put a yard back behind there to store and operate just his automotive stuff, not the, not the propane stuff, right? Not, not the propane stuff. Back behind there, is that right?
Uh, yes, that's what he asked for.
Okay. He went to planning commission, and, uh, there were some concerns by some of the neighbors. We kind of addressed, we're gonna discuss a little bit of that here today. Uh, what we need to do to, to kinda work it out, to see where we're at. Uh, they passed it.
Yes.
Unanimously?
Uh, it says unanimously, then it was unanimous.
Okay, it passed unanimously. All right. Uh, there was some concerns. Get one more, anything else, Dustin?
Uh, no, uh, the other neighboring zoning districts are, are showing up there on the screen if you need to.
Yeah, I do. I wanna, I wanna talk about this for a minute, and I'm not against any of this. But I do, I do, I kinda, I kinda got a little deal I wanna, a little deal I wanna talk about. Do we have the other zoning around there?
Uh, yes, the zoning, the zoning across, uh, Sunset is all C-A-R. The tract directly to the south, uh, the Body Shop is zone, uh, restricted commercial, C-A-R.
Hang on, let's talk about that Body Shop, cause that's who complained. I wanna make sure we come on the same page. That's where I'm kinda with Jackie a little bit with this. I'm not against James, cause I'm for James too. But Jackie has a conditional use permit on his, or what is he zoned?
Uh, the zoning is restricted commercial. If he has, uh, he, he may have a conditional use permit, and I can go back and do the, do the digging on that. I don't know what it would be for. Cause what he's, what he's doing there with that Body Shop is allowed by right in the restricted commercial zoning district.
So he's zoned, Jackie's zoned what?
Uh, Jackie's, to the south is zoned C-A-R, restricted commercial.
He's zoned C-A-R and he wanted to C-A-R?
Yes.
Well, that's my point. Jackie has restrictions on his, and I, it's not that, we're doing straight zoning for James.
That's correct.
And, and it's not that, I, I know James, what he wants to do, he wants to put a yard back there. I'm okay with it, and I asked him to put propane. And really, you can't put propane, I mean, you're, you're restricted to what you boys can do on that propane way before what we're, we're telling you, right? I mean, you can't, you can't build, you can't move that big propane tank back there. You can't store stuffed propane balls or anything. You can't fly, fly propane balls and stuff like that back there.
Well, I would have, you know, trailers with propane tanks on them and stuff like that parked back there.
But they're empty, right?
Right.
They're empty trucks. I mean, they're empty propane tanks. You can't leave, you're not gonna have propane, full of propane tanks. You can't do that based on your deal. Cause you're only allowed a certain amount of storage anyway.
Yeah, for the dispensary.
Got you. Okay. So, I mean, James, you don't have a problem. I wanna make sure Jackie, Becky, you know, she don't wanna walk out there, and you, you're okay putting a fence up. And you're gonna put a, what, what side, how, how tall fence?
Uh, we're talking about a six foot fence, you know, across there, is what we talked about.
Six or eight, Jackie?
Six or eight.
Okay.
I'd like to have, you know, adequate to where, you know, everything is back there.
Well, if you stand on your porch, you look down over that fence, that'd be pretty tall.
Yeah. If you have a propane tank on a trailer down there, it's gonna be above the fence, if it's a six foot fence. It may. So you have both fence, fence.
Hang on, I'll get you.
Yeah, I see.
Let me, let me find that for you.
Saying the same thing, if you put a fence or not.
Yeah, I mean, if I put a six foot fence there or an eight foot fence, if you stand at your house.
Stand at my house.
Okay.
The law will grant a certain height to it.
Hang on. All right, so, let's go back to this six foot fence. They're only allowed to go eight foot tall, sorry?
Uh, they're only allowed to go eight foot tall, because the property to the south is also zoned commercial. There's not, uh, there's not a requirement for a site proof fence, and if there was a requirement for a site proof fence, say if that was R-two zoning, which he has across the street from him going to the east, uh, that would, that would be, the requirement would be a six foot.
See, that's my problem with this whole thing, and I'm not, James, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I know you're not. I'm just, I'm just saying, that's my problem with this whole thing. I understand both sides of the deal. But the problem is, it's all screwed up zoning around there anyway. It all needs to be one or the other to, to, to get the conformity from Jackie to him. Does that make sense? Cause Jackie's no different than him, and he should have the same rights and restriction that he has, and, 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 and that's what my problem with it is, is that, uh, you took a house out, that was a house, and now we're converting over in between two commercial businesses. It, it just, that's just how it lays. Is that right, Jack? Is that right, James? So, you know, um, I wanna make sure we do, we do this deal for, cause the problem is, he's, we're here for straight zoning.
That's correct.
We don't have condition.
That's correct.
He didn't come up here for a conditional use permit.
That's correct.
Because the conformity of our overlay district, he has a right to do that, just like Jackie did with his. Now, the word spot zoning was brought up. It's not spot zoning here, is it?
Uh, no.
If there's any spot zoning, it was where the R-three was in the middle.
Uh, if there was spot zoning, it was probably doing the restricted commercial on the lot to the south.
Once again, Jackie.
But it gets rid of that spot.
Well.
Lines it up.
That's my point, is I've, I, I don't mind James doing that. The worse I do this for James, I'm straight zoning James, which I'm, I'm, James been a great asset to the community. He's done everything right. He gonna do it right. We're gonna make sure he puts the fence up. I'm gonna make sure you, you, you tell us where the water's gonna go, you know, you gotta make sure we're gonna have an engineer, just do some topos up there for that drainage on that lot. So it doesn't do anymore. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can talk with the guys. Someone doze that back and paper it back toward Sunset.
I got you, and you have the right to do that, just make sure it doesn't throw water on anybody else. We gotta do that. But, but the main thing is, it goes back to the point to where, well, really, if we're here to zone anything, I need to zone all that around there, that whole area. Is that right, Dustin?
It would, it would be clearer that way, yes.
Because now I go back behind there, and he's not zoned one way, which he should be, but yet he's backed up to that. But then, yeah, he can't, he can't do some conformities as the other, so I don't know. It just, to me, we gotta clean that up a little bit. Jackie, do you have, do you see what I'm, do you see where I'm getting with this? Do you, do you agree with that a little bit?
Yeah, I agree with it, that, that conditional, uh, I don't know why it ended up being conditional if you, if you make a commercial piece like he has. You can't give him a condition if it's partial.
That's right.
So why, and my commercial, I have a condition.
I'm here to take it up for you. I, I'm with you.
Yeah.
I get you.
So either it is or it isn't.
All right.
I would argue that with the way that the maps are and how long the maps have been, that you're, that that's commercial, that's restricted commercial.
Respect, restricted commercial.
You're, the, the lot that you have, that restricted commercial is a zoning district. It's no, it's, it's not that there's a, it's just.
He is, but hang on. Restricted commercial has different rules than Ja, than, than City of Reno.
Yes.
There you go.
Not in the sense of it reverting, not in the sense of anything else. It's just a different list of land use.
Why, it's not, you can put a condition. Is it not?
It's not conditional. It's not conditional.
My understanding is, it wasn't, I guess it was all of this.
I don't have.
I wouldn't be able to.
Yeah.
It's conditional.
Let's talk about it.
Well, I wanna get him straight too.
I know.
Because here's the whole thing is, uh, I wanna get James straight, but I wanna get Jackie straight too. I, I, we got, we gotta get, we all gotta get on the same playing field. Does that make sense? Is that right, Jack?
That's it.
And, and we gotta have restrictions now. James, you're gonna put that fence up eight foot tall. Is that what you said? Let's do that. Jackie, is that all right?
Fine.
Um, you're not gonna do anything back there anyway, besides just have a parking lot back there anyway.
Have a parking lot, and I'll be able to park a trailer.
And then if you, if you try to put a building on there, then you gotta come up here and get a building permit and whatever else.
Well, do I not get a building permit, but a parking lot in there?
No, 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 but I am gonna require.
Are there restrictions? Are there gonna be restrictions on it or?
No, the only, the only restrictions we do have, we've talked about today in the meeting, the only restrictions we do have is you, we're gonna have to have that. You're gonna have, someone gives the topo, a shot.
Right.
An engineer's shot to show us where that water's going. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And that's based on your, that's based on your parking lot. Yes, you gotta do that. That's, is that right, Mark? Did we discuss that?
Is there the approval, approval, so?
But you're, you're, you're throwing that water back out to Boynton or Sunset anyway. We just wanna make sure it doesn't go on Jackie.
Yeah, well, it's been going on Jackie, and we talked about our, we're gonna put the water down toward Sunset.
Well, hang on. Do we require retention pond on this?
There, there will be, there, there will be a requirement that no additional runoff will go off. Most likely, that turns into a.
So, so he's gonna have to have an engineer survey, James, you're gonna have to have an engineer survey to show us that you don't have to have retention pond and where that water's going. So you got to have an engineer. Jackie?
Mark.
Okay.
I just wanna know if that fence is gonna run east and west and north and south on the block. Cause one is a petition on the south side of those, which is connected to.
James, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna, you wanna, you wanna put all.
Eventually, I don't like to do it all at once, but then I'm gonna put the. And I would think, if, if he's gonna store stuff, and they're gonna want a fence in the face anyways. Yeah, I want it protected, yeah.
And I have good gates and protect people running it out.
You don't want anybody in here?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I make sure one of the fence is all fine.
The reason I brought that up is when you cleaned that up, it made me feel well. I agree with what I'm saying. But when we took one fence down, I think I have a couple of. I got several cars that are around, things that you. And it's, you know, and I have fences used a lot. Took the all the garbage out of there, anybody drive through.
Got this, yeah.
I mean, you agree that we're gonna put a fence.
Yeah, man.
Okay. Well, but I wanna make sure I agree.
Sure.
I mean, I, I being us. Okay, so, all right, eight foot fence. We're gonna put that up there. We're gonna, we, we gotta get an engineer's deal to make sure drain's right.
Yeah.
And then, uh, what else?
That would need to be done before I put up a fence.
That's right. You, you, you're not gonna know where to put the fence up. You don't wanna dam it up.
No.
And then, uh, sorry, I had one more thing I think we discussed today.
Does it have to be still surface?
Driveway does.
Driveway has to be.
Does that be what? Sealed surface.
In other words, your driveway can't be.
All right, and then James, the other one is.
Where they come in off of Boynton, you know, for concrete, but how far is that coming?
But James, this is for Carnot's Auto only. This is not for the propane side of it. Is that right? Okay, that's why I make sure that's on proper record. Okay. And that's, I mean, that's all we can do. There's no, there's no permit, but, but I will say this, Jackie. Dustin, I want you to give Jackie, we need to come back and turn your deal up to while we're here. Does that make sense? Cause I think it'll all, it'll all go together. Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to put it all together.
I mean, I. Yeah, then you all talk.
And, and then there's a chance, there is a conditional use permit on Jackie's, a good chance, because, um, there's only, there's only changes throughout the last few years. I don't know, what, do you remember when that was re-zoned?
Ninety, it was ninety, wasn't it, Jackie?
It's probably, uh.
Ninety-four?
About twenty-six years ago.
So we just need to pull the address file and see what, what all documentation's in there, and then we'll give Jackie a, discuss changing that over to, process to change that over to C-A-R, so it all matches.
Put all matches. Okay? All right, does that, does that satisfy everybody?
I'm satisfied. That works.
I, I, I can't put any conditions or anything else, cause we're, it's a straight zone, and he has the right to, because it's butted up to the other one. And you had, uh, uh, it was own multifamily, we're changing it to conform with that, to conform with yours.
Well, time when I had that time, you know, uh, they took, and they put, they said they put a condition on it at that time. That's twenty-six years ago. And, uh, I don't know what the reasoning was with that, if you have a commercial, put a, a condition on it. So, that's why I'm wondering about James, if there was a condition on it, and I was told by the city that you can't have conditions on commercial property. You can't help make it, it's commercial piece property. And so, that backed me up where, why did they put one? And that's, that's what I wanna talk to you about.
Um, but here's the problem is, that, that, you're, you're right, but, but it was a straight zone. There's no condition sector. There were no, there's no, there, all the, all what he's doing falls underneath that zone.
That's correct.
That's where, that's where we're at. He not asking for any more that goes under, under, that would classify or trigger a different classification that would trigger a conditional use permit.
That's correct.
Outside of the regular use of C-A-R.
That's correct.
So whatever he does there, it has to conform to that C-A-R? Okay. Anything else? God, where's J.T. at on this stupid zoning stuff? Okay. Uh, any other questions? Does that kinda answer everybody? Okay. I now consider the public hearing closed. Uh, going to be discussion consideration possible actual ordinance number ninety-two seventeen, the ordinance requested by Carnot's Incorporated to reclassify the zoning district from multifamily residential R-three to automotive and commercial recreation, C-A-R, on a tract located at two-ten South Boynton Avenue, will particularly describe as lots seven through twelve, block six of the Lakeview Second Edition, the City of Reno, Kanan County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat, therefore. James, you're gonna put, you're gonna put a fence up?
Yeah.
We're gonna get that zoning deal done? I mean, I'm sorry, we're doing zoning deal. You're gonna get the, the engineers?
Yeah.
Study to us? Yeah, and then we're going to, uh, what was the third thing?
Well, he'll tell us about the county.
Yeah, well, he's got the, the, the engineer will tell you if he has, but he's not gonna need one, cause he'll be able to flow it back to the, to the street, I guarantee you. The engineer'll tell you that. Uh, so that one was, uh, the legislature got it in here. Trump's. Oh, it's for, it's for the service station, not, not the propane company. I, I make a motion that we, uh, allow these totally, we change it to C A R. I got a motion, Mrs. Snicket, by Robinson. Roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowler? Uh, Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Okay. Now Jackie, Dustin, I want you to, Jackie, let's get that deal pulled up because I want to get his corrected too. Is that fair enough, Jack?
Yep.
Okay, now we'll move on to twenty-two, discussion consideration possible action ordinance number ninety-two fourteen, the ordinance, uh, City of Reno, meaning thirty-three four dash five and thirty-three four seven, article seven of chapter thirty-three. The code ordinance is City of Reno, meaning consuming, selling, maintenance, and repair of water meters and related infrastructure declared to provide, uh, provided for severability, declared emergency. What's all this about?
The, uh, the ordinance was, uh, this is something that we worked with Public Works on, uh, with, with our, uh, inspectors. One of the, one of the things that we found, uh, happening quite often is we'd go in and install a meter box and then the meter box be broken during construction and because it's our meter box, we'd have to go re- uh, replace it, repair it. Um, this one, uh, it does, this ordinance does three things. Uh, one is that it makes developers responsible if they run over a meter box or they damage a meter or something like that prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
You tore your meter box up, Dave.
Um, any, it, it, it allows, it, it puts that back on the developer and, you know, to.
Make sure paper not.
Yeah, for their mistake. Um, it clarifies language to be consistent with current Public Works policies on meter and meter box installation. Uh, there's some conflicting language in there. It gets rid of it. Um, and it'll, and it'll goes with the current policy, which is we supply the meter, they install the meter under our supervision. Um, and it removes, uh, language about iron pipes, which we don't do anymore, uh, and, and a couple of other changes for clarity.
Okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Roll call, let's start with Paul Horn.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes.
Make a motion to declare emergency?
Got a motion to emergency?
Second.
Second by Ballhorn. Roll call, start with Ballhorn.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder, yes, Mayor White?
Yes. Go on, go on, Dustin, this next one, same thing with landscaping, correct?
Uh, yes.
Discussion consideration possible action ordinance number ninety-two fifteen, and ordinance City of Reno, meaning section three sixty-one, uh, twenty-five, article four, chapter three sixty-one, the code ordinance of City of Reno, Oklahoma, admitting the same, be the landscape ordinance to City of Reno declaring, providing for severability, declared emergency.
You want me to talk about it? Uh, yes, basically the same thing, requires that ground cover be established, whether that be sod or seed, that it's actually grown in, uh, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, because we've had some issues with people seeding things and then that it not having taken root prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
It's also established as a shrubless, suggested shrubs.
That are hardy to this area?
Yes.
Okay.
Appropriately.
I read that. Alright. Okay, uh, I make a motion to approve? Don't everybody jump in. Second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Um, yes.
Oh, alright, Ryder, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Robinson?
No.
Councilwoman Bowler?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
No. Motion fails. We'll move on to twenty-four, discussion consideration possible action, the ordinance number ninety-two sixteen, order submitting employee retirement systems defined under state retirement plan, provided for retirement, uh, revised for a stage for retirement plan, provided for retirement benefits for eligible employees for City of Reno, provided for purpose organization, provided for definition, provided for eligibility, participation provided for non-acceleration benefits, uh, providing for employer employee contributions, providing for accounting, allocation, valuation, providing for benefits, providing for transfer to and from other plans, creating a retirement committee, and providing for powers, duties, and rights to the retirement committee, providing for payment of certain obligations, providing for duration of payment expenses, providing for effective date, providing for vessel scheduling provisions to fund, finance, assist, and be pulled with other corporate cities, administration management, investment as part of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, but for payment of all contributions under the system to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, the management investment provided for fuel and severability, adopting those amendments mandated by the Internal Revenue Code and declaring emergency. This was your deal, I bet.
No, but I can answer it.
Go ahead.
Every year, essentially, the I R S comes up with new rules that apply to our retirement system and it clarifies language, uh, okay, M R F, in conjunction with attorneys who specialize in pension law, provide us these updates so that our plans stay compliant with the I R S.
Got you.
So that's just what this is.
Okay. I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Roll call, let's start with Ballhorn.
Yep.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Some, some wrong detail about you.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Motion to declare emergency.
I got a motion, second. I got a second roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowler?
Yep.
Mayor White?
Yes. Move on to twenty-five, discussion consideration possible action regarding the number ninety-two eighteen, the order submitting article code section two seventy, uh, seventy-five of one eighty, sorry, one sixty-eight, to the same meaning of the article, City of Reno, Oklahoma, relating to the carry of weapons, violation penalties, and accessions, repeal ordinance in conflict, providing for severability, declaring emergency. Ken, this is your deal. You're gonna come on up and tell us about it because the new law took place, is that right?
Yeah, due to the state law change, what was missing, you charge for coming, for to the municipal area. Uh, the, uh, state law, uh, changed, uh, and our ordinances were way out, our current ordinances were out of compliance. Uh, so this is bringing the, uh, basically adopted state statute is a very lengthy, very in-depth uh, section, so we basically adopted state statute, placed that into municipal ordinance, uh, under the one sixty-eight, so it, it coincides with or identical to what state statute currently says. And that would affect, affect, uh, as of November first of this year.
So basically what we're trying to say is because of the constitutional carry and the laws change, we're, we're changing our laws that do exactly what the state Oklahoma laws do.
Mirrors it exactly.
Mirrors it to the clarity.
The, the officers and also the citizens of law.
That's right. Make much more of a move. Yep.
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Roll call, let's start with, uh, Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowler?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes.
Motion for emergency.
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Roll call, let's start with Ballhorn. Yep.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Twenty-six, discussion consideration possible action ordinance, uh, meaning article one, section two fifty-eight, same meaning article as of Reno, Oklahoma, relating to the carry fireworks at lake or on lake property, repeal ordinance is conflict, provide for severability, declare emergency. Ken, same thing.
Yes, our, our current ordinance, uh, prohibited farm on, on, uh, the lake of Reno, or, or lake property, which is a, um, park, uh, and state statute prohibits restrictions on that location, so that is ranked again, ranks our municipal ordinance, what our state stat, what Oklahoma state statute is and as well as the.
So now you can carry down a park, you can carry it down in the lake, at the lake, not in the lake, I guess, at the lake, based on state statute.
Yes.
Once again, we're mirroring, mirroring state law.
That's great, that's great. We're, we're just correcting what, uh, taking away any violations that we found in what our current ordinance.
Meaning that.
And making.
Oh, there's no conflict. So there's no conflict. Make a motion with room. I got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Roll call, let's start with, uh, Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowler?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes.
For emergency.
You got a motion, emergency?
Second.
Second. Roll call, let's start with Ballhorn. Yep.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Discussion consideration possible action away, competitive bid process, bidding purchase disp- uh, dispatch, radio console software and license required upon rolling, to continue support for maintenance and all, uh, at, at state contract price. Okay? Toby, uh, basically, uh, Jason, I guess you and Ken, I mean, it's you three. The bottom line is is that, uh, we're losing our con, this is the radio stuff. We're losing our contract. We gotta, we gotta redo the whole thing. Other cities are going through the same thing.
Yes.
And it's gonna cost us a lot of money, but we gotta do it, or we won't have radios.
That's, that's correct. And plus what this is, is the, is the software, hardware software that, uh, our number one center utilizes to dispatch police, fire, and E M S uh, under our, our system that we currently have, that software as of, um, December thirty-first will no longer be supported. In other words, if our, the station went down, that station's just down. Uh, we, we bought some temporary fixes in case something would happen between now and the time this, this would be approved or we have a council. Uh, but for us to maintain the system, the new software updates, software is continuously updated. And so we, we, uh, to come into compliance and to have that back, uh, with support and.
But you're gonna bring the state, you're gonna bring, you're gonna bring back to us, right, for approval, or is this just asking?
This is the purpose.
This is it, right here?
This is.
Basically, it's, uh, it's a, how much is it? I mean, it's, uh.
The, the actual bottom line number is a hundred and forty.
Hundred, yeah.
It's a hundred and forty-seven thousand, one seventy-eight, and eighty-nine. Uh, and then the maintenance, uh, agreements, uh, for year two through five, uh, would be an annual of fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
Okay. Alright. Thank you, Ken.
My pleasure.
For, make that motion approval?
Second.
Second, roll call, let's start with, uh, Ballhorn. Yep.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yep.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Number twenty-eight, discussion consideration possible action award project number K eleven, refuge water storage on Union Pump Station, first name on Jones Road, without chairman, sign on documents associated there for, uh, we're table on this item.
Yep.
I make a motion to table?
Second.
Second by Ballhorn. Uh, roll call, start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowler?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Um, nominee and appoint one representative to serve as Reno Main Street liaison.
Did, did you?
Did you?
Twenty-nine?
No, I did. Discussion consideration possible action for amendment to existing restaurant and bar lease agreement.
Motion per authority.
Motion per authority from Robinson, second from Ryder. Roll call, start with Ball. Yep.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Nomination appoint representative to serve as Reno Main Street liaison. I've been, I've been doing it last three years. I don't get called yet, but I'm sure hoping that we, I'm sure hoping I get the telephone call.
Motion.
I, I'd like, I'd like to do it. That's the next two.
Second.
Second.
I got a motion, second. Roll call, let's start with Ballhorn.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Nomination appoint representatives of chamber congress, same way.
Yes.
Second.
Alright. I got a motion, second. Roll call, let's start with Ballhorn. Yep.
Councilwoman Bowler, Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Okay. Ken, Jeremy. Uh, oh, hang on, this is, no, I'm not there yet. Nomination appointment of one primary, one alternate to the serve of community action board directors, one year term. Tracy, did, did I, did I put you on?
She's.
Right. I, well, I'm not because they did not have, um, an opening.
But now they do.
Do they?
I know, I'm asking.
No, not, not that I'm aware of, because they had somebody else in the meeting, and so they said no to.
That's right, they appointed the county.
Right, the county can.
Was it a commissioner or was it the county?
Here, let's do this.
Commissioner.
I got an idea.
Okay.
I'm gonna nominate you if there's a spot open. And then what, Lindsay, would you call and see?
Yeah.
What the deal is?
Yeah.
Because they go through this, they rotate it, this happened to us before, Lindsay. They gave it to us, they took it away, then.
Right.
So let's just see what's going on. So I make a motion, I nominate Tracy Ryder if the board is served.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Now, the second.
Second by Robinson. Roll call, start with Ballhorn. Yep.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Oh, yeah. Alright, non-nomination appointment of one council member in primary, and one alternate to ACOG board directors, one council member in primary, alternate ACOG one, nine-one-one board directors, one council member in primary, and one alternate to the government road to the board of directors, one year term set, expired November twentieth, two thousand twenty. Okay, Ken and Jeremy. Uh, we got some hot issues coming up on ACOG. I haven't gone, I haven't been going, J T was kind of the main representative. But we need to, one of us needs to do it, but I, I don't think that anybody, I think it has to be elected official, the way, because I think we tried this before, is that right?
I believe that is correct.
Alright.
That's what with John Sharp over at ACOG.
What did he say?
He's at elected official only on the board.
That's what I thought.
But staff can, can attend the meetings.
Okay.
Can, can we do it?
Yeah, I knew Paul. Paul, Paul didn't go.
That's correct.
Because I don't go because it's bringing, it didn't affect us. I mean, it was big word for Paul. But let's say this, but, but you're gonna need my nodal some of this stuff, is that right? Alright. Well, I, it, it conflicts sometimes what I'm doing, but if you all keep me in the loop to when I need to be there, I'll be there because there is some issues that we need to, to vote on. And thank you all. Uh, we need to vote on to make it work. Does that make sense? So if, instead of J T this time, put me down for the deal, because it, it, I'll do it. It, it's basically the same bunch I serve on with Oklahoma Municipal League.
Currently, you are the primary and him is the alternate.
Well, J, what happened, J T was at one time.
Two, two years ago. Give it the plan.
Alright. Then I, let's do that. Let's do the second thing we had, J T and Ken.
You may.
I mean, Matt did, Matt did. Gosh, we, we, motion to approve that. Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
Second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Bowler?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Prostor, Mayor White?
Yes. Alright, nomination point for council members to fill and mayor to fill trustee positions at air park authority. Okay. Uh, I make a motion, who, who's chairman of it? Did you already do that?
No, we're gonna do it.
We're gonna do it next meeting. We defer that.
Oh, okay. Alright, well, I, I, I point all this to the, I, I make a motion, I point all this to the air park board.
Air park authority.
Why are we doing that?
Because the trust indenture for the hospital authority was changed to say that you automatically become the trust indenture of the air park authority and recreational authority, or not.
I got it. I remember that.
So this is just how it's.
It is.
Motion for the, for the full council.
Yes. I make a motion that, that the mayor and all four elected officials serve as on the air park authority. I make a motion that the mayor and all four elected officials serve as on the Air Park Authority. I got a motion, a second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Bowler?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Prost, Mayor White?
Yes. Now I make a, nomination, um, appoint four council members and the mayor to fill trustee positions for recreational authority, I make a motion to be, nominate the mayor and the four elected officials to serve as the recreational, as the recreational authority.
Second.
Second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Bowler?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Prost, Mayor White?
Yes. Alright. Presentation of financial reports. Do, do, do. Okay. Sales tax came in, Marcia. We're down.
Yes, one is in the report, was for November, was nine hundred and eighteen thousand, and then, uh, November came down, and I was looking, I'm not bringing up eight hundred-
Eight hundred, uh, I think eight forty-seven, eight, something like that.
That eight hundred.
Now, let's talk about this, and I'm gonna talk about this a little bit on financial reports, Marcia, Jeremy, I want you all to kind of jump in here, I mean, we've had meetings, we have, so. Uh, you know, we're a little concerned. Uh, uh, we're, we're really, you know, based on the oil, oil and gas market around here a lot, uh, I say we're concerned, uh, we're like any other city that's in metro, we're still growing, our incline has absolutely gone up, our permits are still up, way over what we projected, uh, we're gonna have more number of people, we are gonna be down on sales tax based on just kind of, uh, you know, the operation of Halliburton and things like that. So, saying that, the good thing is that we've, we've prepared for it somewhat, you know, um, we haven't, uh, gone out of line, uh, we're gonna have to live in our means, and it's gonna be kind of challenging, I think the next couple of months is gonna be challenging for Mr. Fraser, and myself mainly, and, and staff, but I think, we have had meetings, and we're gonna have private meetings, give and I, uh, more and more, uh, to talk to Marcia, and just kind of work through this process. Like, someday, we're holding back certain things, to make sure we can complete certain things, we're getting listed projects, to make sure we can complete that out, we're gonna assess, um, you know, all staff, we don't, we don't see, uh, we don't see anything currently, where we're gonna have to lay anybody off or anything else, but it will be a substantial dip, you know, to our budget, you know, we're, we're currently down now on meeting our budget, that we're at right now, it's a small amount, but as this goes along, it, it'll, it'll be more. Now, the good thing about it is, Mr. Fraser and I, we've held back on all spending for the first three months, and now we're gonna do the same thing, in the next few months, we're gonna have some meetings together, to put some holes, some travel, some suggestions, and I hadn't talked to him about some of his ideas, I'm just talking about how we've done in the past, so, we gotta get together, and, and, uh, with, with Mr. Fraser, myself, and Marcia, and just kind of get a plan together of kind of how we need to kind of handle this, if you, you know, and I, I think we can, we can weather through the storm, uh, you know, we, uh, we have a lot of income, we still have a major tire store coming in, you know, a, a big warehouse, units the size of, of, uh, Walmart, so, yeah, two Walmarts, so, uh, it's gonna be a major deal, so we, we have some things happening. I will tell you, I have, uh, I'm really pleased, uh, I've talked with the governor, uh, of course, because of all the stuff going on, I've worked real close with the Department of Callers, and, uh, you know, we've, we've had a great relationship with Department of Callers the last probably three years, don't you think, Matt? Jeremy?
Absolutely.
And we're getting businesses that people in Oklahoma City are getting from talking to us, don't you agree, Jeremy, and you were surprised with some of that?
Yes.
When you came. I, I think you're gonna see even more sub push, we have sellable land, uh, tonight, we just did, you know, seventy-three acres, you know, we, you know, Reno has acreages to where we have certain lots that are two hundred, three hundred acres, that are zoned now, uh, industrial, so, and they're in the corridor of the, uh, the Radio Road and Route sixty-six, or, or, you know, I know how burbs departing, uh, from, from the area, but I, I do know that, that, uh, I'm pretty sure that, that facility's sold, and, uh, that's, that's, that's working out as we speak. So there's gonna be another business in there, that, uh, it's gonna be the oil and gas, but it's gonna bring us more, and I will tell you, the eight hundred people, I, I mean, I, I won't say this, the previous, so here, I wouldn't say, anyway, I know everybody in town, basically, and I, I just do about five or six people that worked out there, so a lot of these people were transferred in, and didn't really buy homes here or anything else, it's gonna hurt us sales tax wise, because when you drove around Swadleys at lunch, you saw those Halliburton trucks, and the Chinese buffet, they're packed, but we still have a lot of business going on still in Reno. Sales tax is down, Marcia, for this month, to the eight hundred mark, but a year ago, this month also was down the lowest it's been, is that correct?
Right, it was, it went down like a thousand dollars in just a month, and then it kind of leveled back.
So it might be this triggered this month before the, don't forget, we're, we're a month behind, you know, the-
In the October, November.
So it's like you're in October, so you're getting that collection back, so I feel confident we'll know more, Jeremy and I will know more in the next three or four months, of exactly kind of what the, the lay of the land is, and it's given time for Marcia to get those numbers, and Jeremy and I, and it's the first time Jeremy and I saw the numbers today, we were, we'll take it back, but I think we're, we're, it's working, don't you agree, Mr. Fraser?
I, I agree.
Go ahead, I mean, you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, I was just gonna say that, um, ultimately, being in Oklahoma, the way that already, um, streets are set up, over eighty percent of our general fund is funded by sales tax, so when we take a big hit on the sales tax end, um, we have to oftentimes put projects that we would really like to accomplish to the side, or, or kind of push those projects out, so, uh, with mayor's commitment to maintaining staffing, and, uh, those things are actually more important people, um, we are gonna have to weather this storm a little bit, but it is doable.
Any other questions? Marcia, any more comments?
No.
I wouldn't if I were you. That's a pretty fit. Alright. Anything else? Alright, uh, uh, Bob, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Timmy?
No.
Tracy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fraser? Mr. Sandwich? I'm not asking Roger, I don't have anything either. Alright, oh, what do I do? I do, I do have a couple of things. No, I wanna, uh, if you haven't been to Legion Park, you know, I, um, the Public Works, and everybody's done a great job, I know the police are working their tail off, uh, trying to, you know, keep people, tearing things up, but I'm gonna tell you, I, they, they've done a great job, and, and, and the downtown deal, we, we won, where we win, Best Lights?
Best Lights.
Best Lights, their downtown parade, so I'm pretty proud of that, Jeremy, uh, tripped an old fire truck and has a claim against us, uh-
I'm on the board for Ole Miss.
So you get odd.
Thank you, Roger, but, uh, we had a great time, the, the downtown looks good, are we done shooting the movie almost? Start Friday? The rain's the last, the rain scene's the last thing, I, wait, this one more person asking what happened out by the church. I finally told somebody, I said there was an explosion, are you kidding me? Yeah, so it, it's working good. Alright, now that's all I got, but I do appreciate Public Works and everybody, and the firemen were out, uh, making smores, and it just, it's a good deal, wasn't it, Jason?
Yeah.
Alright. Um, uh, executive session. Consider convene executive session for Cityville forty-six statute title twenty-five, section three oh seven B, to discuss appraisable property purchase of real estate located part two, section five, township twelve, North Range seven, West Indian Marine, K and K, Oklahoma, located one six eight one, North Chalk Hill Avenue, it's Cityville Reno, contain three point two nine acres, more or less, take appropriate action, open session. Make a motion, uh, we go to executive session. I got a motion.
Second.
Second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilwoman Robinson?
Yep.
Councilman Bowler?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Prost, Mayor White?
Yes. I got a motion, I got an executive session.
Still move?
I got a motion by Bob, second by Robinson, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Bowler?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Prost, Mayor White?
Yes. Uh, take no action?
Second. Well, we need to do it.
Yeah, we should, no action. I just say, we don't take no action.
Take no action.
Alright, motion for Jeremy?
Still move?
You got a motion by, uh, a motion by Ballhorn?
Second.
Second by Ryder, roll call, start with Ball, all three say aye.
Aye.
We're good.